John, is this agenda, um, did we find out that last week John Grace wasn't scheduled and it was just a?
Yes.
He emailed me. Oh, so he was scheduled, but he emailed you to cancel, so now he's really on this week?
Yes.
Okay.
He apparently like emailed us, it's top morning.
Oh. We, I just remember we weren't sure if it was even the right week or something, if we had it messed up.
No, he was.
Take a look at the minutes.
They're mine.
All of yours.
Yeah. Can we please add under Highway Department at the very end, um, that I would like to see the county apply for the funding to replace OS 65 due to the three-ton weight limit? Cause that is what makes it a pressing issue. It's not just because that's my district, I mean, obviously that's one of the reasons, but that three-ton weight limit is a concern, it's a, it's kind of an emergency type situation. Since that's one of the only throughways to get to the highway from east of Lincoln, uh, Lucas there. And then under Security Systems, we requested a second bid. That was the, kind of the summation of the board to request a second bid on that after the proposal by Tangeman. The other correction that I think under District Three Commissioner, under my portion, the correspondence that I've read in the email, and I know, Don, you probably don't have a copy of it, but basically, it wasn't just concerning the Council on Aging relocating their office, they, it was a list of concerns from the Lincoln Senior Center about the Council on Aging.
So just directly relocating their office.
Sure. And the, and it should say received, read correspondence received from Lincoln Senior Center. I think that would kind of be the keynote here because we've had correspondence from the Sullivan Senior Center for quite a few years over this issue. Now, we're starting to receive the same type of complaints from the other senior center. That's all I have. Those three things.
There are no corrections, love. Are there any motions?
I move to approve the minute says corrected.
You have a second?
Second.
Do you have any further discussion, all those are voted out?
Aye. I do have one question. Don, under Health Department and instead about Ladonna answering questions, the, the history of the Senior Care Act program. What we really wanted though, that we didn't get to was for her to explain the dispersment or something. Do you remember that that was kind of what we talked about and then we never really got to that topic?
Without her suggestions for a senior.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we need to, we're gonna have to do an extra meeting next week. We're into the month.
You mean have a meeting on Thursday instead of Monday because Monday's Memorial Day?
We could do that.
Let's do, I would.
You wanna do that?
Do what?
Do you have anything on the agenda yet for?
Um, I texted Hannah and she said just live on it and live on it, and said she could come either day.
Okay.
So.
It doesn't matter to me?
I'd move to have the commission, the regular commission meeting on Thursday, May 31st.
That work for you?
We're gonna do eight.
Cancel.
We're gonna do eight AM.
Eight o'clock, yeah, we can do it at eight.
Are we doing eight AM?
Yeah.
At eight AM?
Do I have a second?
Let's see.
All of the, or say aye.
Alright.
Okay, we have two weapon disbursements. One to the Sullivan Senior Center for $800. One to the Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce for $4000. For repairs to the building and aboard the Senior Center, there was bone and power loss.
Uh, yes, I, I think she said, uh, yeah. I forget what they're calling.
Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, they're gonna do some work on their building, suck clean and get more deteriorating than they also.
I move we approve the recommendations.
Second?
Got a motion, second, approve the weapon disbursements. Is there any other discussion? No, all those are voted aye.
Aye.
David, you up first?
Do you wanna go ahead and approve the?
Okay, that warrant, that warrant is a credit.
Return.
Just a credit.
They were buying this name.
Okay, yeah. Bills for the Lincoln Park Manor repairs. faucet handles and a toilet seat maybe, something like that.
Seats and springs for one, one to brass backing budget repair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you folks?
Pretty good.
Good. Um, just a brief synopsis of what I've been involved in lately. Um, April 24th and 25th, I attended a PBR 220 Emergency Response to Domestic Biological Incidents class training that went on two days down in Wichita, addressed, um, not discussed biological agents that don't have immediate productive produce symptoms in victims and signs of biological agents are not as apparent as other hazards responders may encounter. Intentional biological incidents are usually acts of bio-crime, bio-warfare, bioterrorism, or agro-terrorism. Unintentional biological incidents are usually either naturally occurring outbreaks or accidental releases of agents. Incubation period in this time between exposure to a biological agent and the initial appearance is, is called clinical sign. Today approximately 75% of emerging infectious disease and 60% of pathogens that infect humans are zoonotic. Zoonotic diseases are twice as likely to be associated with emerging diseases as non-zoonotic diseases. Zoonotic disease is a disease that can be passed between the animals and humans. The virus that causes the flu can be transmitted from pigs to birds to cattle to humans. Crossover describes when an animal disease moves into a different animal species or humans. One example of a disease that can cross over from animals to humans is avian influenza or bird flu caused by influenza A virus. Flu viruses have the ability to change and mutate. These changes and mutations can occur slowly or rapidly. Emerging disease, a disease that has gone unrecognized, HIV in the eighties and diseases including Middle East Respiratory Syndrome, MERS, or H7N9 influenza today are emerging diseases. Reemerging diseases sometimes referred to as a resurging disease, a disease that has been around for decades or centuries, but emerges as a new outbreak in a different form or location. West Nile virus in the US in 2004, in, in the 2014, I'm gonna butcher this word, Chikungunya outbreak. Steve, help me, did I get that right?
Good luck.
Close enough.
Okay, thank you. In the Caribbean, this spread to Central and South America and across the United States are reemerging diseases. Novel pathogen, a pathogen that is new or different from what has been seen before. Emerging infectious disease are caused by novel pathogens. Health map tracks biological incidents in the world today. All diseases that exist today were once emerging biological threats. Between 1940 and 2004, more than 335 emerging infectious diseases were reported. Several diseases have reemerged over the past 20 years, often in new geographic locations. Um, not, not on the synopsis, but April 30th, we had our LEPC meeting up the, in the basement of the hospital. Um, items that were discussed were communications amongst just the agencies. Um, the LA PC conference is coming up, July 25th and 26th. Um, Red Cross, Ottawa County, myself and, and Red Cross had hosted the MARF and the Shelter Training over in Beverly. And then the HMEP grant, still haven't heard anything back from the federal government waiting on that. Um, Ladonna and I, Sherry Fickeren, um, Deputy Ewen and Katie Gardner from the hospital, all attended a mass fatality exercise down at the Webster Conference Center on February 15th. Um, tabletop discussion and it was broken kind of up in counties for the North Central Region. So there was 12 counties with a pretty good amount of people that were there. Um, that was discussion at the LEPC meeting. Um, April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, we had the storms come through Lincoln County. Um, storms were within, were within the county for three days, or on three days. Had storm splatters out all three days, hail reported in different locations throughout the county, along with reports of rotation and lowering reported in Lincoln and Beverly. sirens were activated in Lincoln and power was out in Barnard and Beverly. So there was a need to have the first responders in the communities drive up and down the streets with fire trucks to make communication with the people, make them aware that the sirens were out and seek shelter because of the rotation, the spotting. Um, reference that, there's been some discussions started also, reference backup systems that were in place or need to be in place in each fire station. Um, again, that will be discussed at the upcoming June 5th Corley Fire Chiefs meeting that we're hosting in Barnard. Um, May 9th, I went to a meeting in the basement in LCH, um, that had Central Kansas Mental Health. The hospital was there, along with the Health Department, um, Lincoln Park Manor, were they there?
No.
Okay.
School district was there.
Kathy Robertson was there. Thank you. Um, and there was discussion and I was only able to stay for part of that meeting as I had a previous meeting scheduled. Um, with that, part of the discussion that I was involved in was in the event of a disaster, would their agency be involved in coming into Lincoln County if we had a MARF, again, multi-agency resource center, or a shelter set up to communicate with people that were struggling with the aftermath of losing a loved one, a pet, or property? Was told that the event, in the event of a disaster, that if needed, the agency would respond. Again, Ladonna has a $24 contact number, she'd need to be that information and the person's name that, that is associated with her lead for Central Kansas Mental Health. May 10th, I hosted a North Central Kansas Emergency Management Association meeting at the Finch Theater. Um, had representatives that spoke about the Kansas Wildland Task Force and discussed the expectations and of the rough draft and the direction that Kansas Wild Correction, Kansas Fire Working Group was hoping to move. Asked for Representatives to speak at the Corley Chiefs meeting on June 5th at 7:00 PM in Barnard. Mark Willis, the state training officer, um, attended the meeting and told the group that his intent was to continue to have an active program with the state of Kansas. Advised that he is working on continuing to have a good program and that he was trying to carry on, fix, and improve what was previously been set in place with Kansas Division of Emergency Management. Um, May 16th and 17th, I attended my basic emergency management class. Um, originally I was supposed to go to Topeka for that class, but that was on the first, second, and third, and I opted out of the class to stay in county for the storms. Had the opportunity, um, Division of Emergency Management had contacted me Monday of last week and asked if I would be able to come to the Topeka class. I had cleared my schedule and was able to attend that class. Um, during class, it was reiterated that we can have a local disaster declaration put in place at any time and this is good for seven days when it is signed. You can have a verbal disaster declaration in place. If, for example, I need to call KDM and say, hey, I need these, these things, I can contact Terry. You can say, yes, enact this, and then you guys can have your discussion. So verbal is okay to have an initial inception and then through that process, you guys have your special phone meeting and yes, you enact the disaster declaration and then after that, the next time you have your normally scheduled meeting, that's when you sign a date, the disaster declaration. Um, Governor Collier has done recently, had, had done a few of those with the expectations of wildfire. He signed a statement disaster declaration ahead of the event and that it wasn't needed ultimately. But you can do this as often as you like without any pushback because you're trying to be ahead of an incident. May 21st, at 12 o'clock, I'm gonna be in Ottawa County for an emergency response training session with all of Ottawa County employees being involved in having the courthouse closed from 1 to 5 o'clock. This will be an active shooter scenario involving all departments of the county along with North Central Special Response Team. That includes law enforcement officers from 12 counties within the North Central Homeland Security Council Region. Interested Leo units wanting to participate just need to contact Under Sheriff Scotty Becker from Osborne County or Tyler Van Coven, Coven, Coburn from Ottawa County to get involved. Um, one last attachment that I put in your, your packet of breakout. Um, this gentleman's gonna be talking, and this, this is being hosted by the Healthcare Coalition, the North Central Healthcare Coalition. Um, this gentleman's gonna be talking Thursday, May 31st from 1 to 5 o'clock up in Beloit. And then on June 1st, he's gonna be talking down in Salina from 8 to 12. Um, why teens kill. Um, we'll talk about teen school, teen killers, school shooters, mass murderers, special serial killers, causes, warning signs, triggers, and preventions. Sent this information out to the school districts. Um, I think Mrs. Robertson is planning to attend. Um, I know June, Mr. Steckline over in Sullivan is informing that he sent this information out to the staff also and he has some people, he didn't give me a number, that are willing to attend. This also went out to the fire chiefs and to law enforcement in the communities.
Are you familiar with him at all?
I, I have, I've never had any training that, that he's hosted, but I've been told that he has spoken a national law enforcement seminar and, and I heard good things about it.
I'm just wondering if there's a Second Amendment agenda here at all.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's, that's all the information I have.
Um, I guess I, I would be interested in hearing what your reaction to today's meeting in Ottawa County is, whether Lincoln County needs to, to do that. I think we continue to see those incidences occur quite frequently and I am beginning to become concerned about the access to this courthouse being wide open, knowing that there can be issues with not only county traffic, but the county clerk as well. We do are not, we are not very secure, I guess is what I'm saying, lack of security.
Is there a reason that they chose the courthouse instead of a school setting, being that everything we hear about in the news is all?
I, I do not know. I know Deputy Van Coburn that's involved in the North Central Response, Special Response Team. I know him and the Emergency Manager from Ottawa County, Maru Balu, um, have had interaction and discussion and they took that before the commissioners and they said, yes, let's do it here. As far as the schools, I, I don't know why they're not.
The school is still in, no, it isn't either, I was gonna say, school is in session.
We're not in session anymore, but.
Mitchell, but Ottawa County closed too last week.
I mean, I'm just saying, as a scenario, as a practice scenario, you know, what we see is not the courthouse setup, but
And one of the reasons.
It's all similar, I get it.
May be that the school maybe have secured their, to one door where the courthouse in Ottawa County is like this and it's open. I know they don't have any secure, I'm sure they don't have security.
Didn't Ottawa County have a jail breach stolen crime?
Yes, yes, they did.
Person from the jail come to the courthouse?
No, he escaped, he escaped and he was running around, Richard Cody, and I think he ended up, he got captured up in Nebraska, wasn't it?
So I know we have no firearm signs, but does that mean that our own staff here are unable to have any firearm protection?
County, I'd say I believe that county property is exempt from employees being allowed to carry.
What do you mean exempt? Exempt as in?
As we cannot, sorry, we cannot have. I think that's what.
Maybe we need to address that.
Do you have something more?
Yeah, the legislature's already addressed the issue of courthouse accessibility and they have stated, passed legislation, you can't close it to the public, it's a public building.
But we can establish security at our doors?
No.
Yes, we can.
No, you can't. Legislature says no.
If you, you can, but if you do, you have to have an armed guard or you have to have, or, well, an armed guard and a security wall because some of the courthouses have locked them and did that. Like you can have one thing, entry open and then they can have a metal detector if you can walk through.
What kind of instant communication do you have? I mean, the nice thing is, not even 100 yards away, we have our sheriff station, so.
We have panic buttons.
You do have a panic button that goes to the sheriff?
They, they'll turn along with the video camera itself, if somebody hits the panic button, they have, they can look up at the screen and see.
But you asked about the panic button with the guy that gave the proposal last week and does that just mean there's no upgrade?
No update.
Okay. Well, it is nice that we're so close, I mean, that's one benefit.
But again, it doesn't take much time either.
No.
Right, which is why maybe we should be concerned about our own staff protecting themselves in that scenario.
You don't want me to. I could do it as a kid, but I'm not so sure.
Are you, are you going to, boy?
I'm going to, actually I'm going Friday morning, my son has baseball game Thursday evening, so I'm, I'm going to Salina Friday morning. Yes, yes. And again, you can sign up on KSTR if you're arrested.
Are, you know, is our law enforcement going?
I sent the information to Mike and Justin, I have a pretty feedback from them, but I will communicate with them again, just to double check. Any other questions?
I believe so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, Steve, have you got everybody here that you're bringing with you or you got her, okay?
My wife, you want me?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Wherever you want.
Okay.
I was told you had some questions.
Questions concerning?
Why the hospital couldn't run.
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, I, I.
Lincoln Park Manor.
What's this about?
Oh, okay.
Yes, so I think the, that you've already talked about this in the past, but with the new situation that we have going on there, it's been brought up again. You know, we feel like there's been a successful venture with the hospital, what you've done there and the way that they've set up the bond and been able to pay for it and, um, just the productivity that the hospital has seen seems to be in a very positive light. And since we don't have that same scenario with the nursing home, we were wondering, or there's, there's a faction wondering, you know, what is, could you re-explain, and I know you've explained it to me once and that wasn't enough for me to grasp the whole thing?
That's okay.
So if you would re-explain the scenario as to why the hospital no longer has long-term care and what that financially means as far as, as far as the hospital have any, having anything to do with running the nursing home?
Well, and, um, let me just preface this by pointing out that the county hospitals that operate long-term care units have been generally getting out of that business over the past number of years. Most recently, uh, uh, Republic County Hospital and Smith County Hospitals have both closed their long-term care units. And the primary reason is because of the way we're reimbursed by Medicare, or cost reimbursed. And so, uh, in, in consideration of what we're doing here in Lincoln County, just back of the envelope calculations, if we were to take over the operation of the Lincoln Park Manor directly, it would cost us a minimum of a quarter of a million dollars a year of Medicare reimbursement.
Does that mean a reduction in your ability to collect on the critical access portion of the hospital?
Yes, yes, and it, it all comes back to the way Medicare reimburses us here, what's called cost reimbursement. Uh, where Medicare pays us what they consider are reasonable and necessary costs of taking care of patients. And they get to make those basic decisions. We're a very Medicare-heavy, uh, critical access hospital, so approximately 80% of what we do is with Medicare population. Uh, and that's why it's such a big number. And again, this is just a back of the envelope kind of calculation, we'd have to run a true pro forma to get it, but, uh, it would be just cost prohibitive. Um, and because we're already under the gun in some respects, uh, I know the, under the Budget Control Act of 2011, uh, the Congress basically put into place what they called the sequester, where they cut funding for two different entities that, uh, they have control over. Number one was the military and number two was hospitals. The budget caps on the military were lifted earlier this year. Sequestration is still in effect for hospitals. That costs us annually about $125,000 already that they produced our, what they could reimburse because of that.
That's from the state?
No, that's from the feds, that's from the feds. Um, and then of course, uh, the way they do their accounting, as I was saying earlier, if we take on administration of the Lincoln Park Manor, there'd be at least another quarter of a million dollars on there. Now, if you wanna get into the way the state does its accounting, um, basically for Medicaid and I'm not sure what the numbers are, the Medicaid numbers are at Lincoln Park Manor or what their private pay is or any of that mix. But they also basically underpay by about 10% what your actual cost is if you're running Medicaid patients. And even though you're reporting your cost to the state on a regular basis, their reimbursement changes happen maybe every five to seven years. Gradually you get to pick that up, but you're always behind. And with the advent of the managed care organizations, it's gotten worse because they are, um,
Making a.
And, and, because they're delaying, uh, picking up new members in Medicaid for, uh, long-term care for some months. They review and review and review. And so, uh, last time I was talking with people at Lincoln Park Manor, they were something like six to 10 months behind and you just never make that up, so.
So, the hospital, in essence, you're saying you, you bill at a certain rate for your services and if, if the state or in this case, federal entity that, you know, is.
We, we get most of our reimbursement from the feds, we do very little inpatient. We do very little inpatient Medicaid business.
Okay.
Which is where we get the bulk of our.
Well, and you said 80% Medicare, so that makes sense. So, so the Medicare reimbursement rate is reduced per service by a certain percentage across the board for the hospital?
Right, correct.
Just for the simple fact that you have some sort of long-term care option at your hospital? Or affiliated with the management of the hospital?
If we were to pick up the management of.
Oh, yeah, this is hypothetical, isn't it?
Yes, yes, yes. Then basically, we would not be in lack. There are certain categories of costs. You know, Medicare, again, reimburses your reasonable costs, but they look at your, what they consider revenue generating activities, that'd be lab, x-ray, inpatient, outpatient, skilled beds, things of that nature, you get reimbursed on that. Where they actually calculate that every year.
So.
And so they pay us basically in per diem. And what they do, the overhead associated with operating a nursing home, since you're doing primarily Medicaid and almost no Medicare business, you're not allowed those costs on the cost report. So that's where we would lose, they, Medicare only reimburses for their patients. We don't get any reimbursement from Medicare, from Medicaid patients, or from prospective patients, or private pay patients, or anything of that nature, so.
But what you're.
If they, if they would come in with any administrative, it probably would be what are called general and administrative costs, would not be allowed. And so that would reduce our overall reimbursement by approximately a quarter of a million dollars.
I'm still trying to understand the funding concept, though. What you're saying is each reimbursement that you receive for each individual billing that you do, x-ray, you know, for patient B, that amount of reimbursement is reduced for the simple fact that you have a long-term care option and you're not, does that take away your status as critical access? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, no, we would retain, retain the critical access hospital reimbursement. We wouldn't lose that. We would just lose the reimbursement associated with it because of the way they account for our costs. Medicare gets aside what your reasonable costs are. And so every year, in fact, we're in the middle of that now, we'll have our auditors in here next month, and they'll start weighing over all of our books. They do our annual audit, and then they file our cost report, which is reviewed by the administrative agent in this area, which is Wisconsin Physician Services.
And you're saying that was a direct result of Budget Control Act in 2011?
No, the sequester was Budget Control Act of 2011. That, that took approximately 3% off the top. And so, but our allowable costs are part of the regulations from CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid.
I guess I'm just not understanding the reasoning, not your reasoning, just the reasoning of if a hospital is providing additional services covered by Medicaid in this particular circumstance, why would Medicare that has no connection to Medicaid reduce its percentage of its reimbursement for any given service for a different patient?
Because their percentage of what they're doing now would then be transferred to something other than what they're doing now.
Other than a Medicare patient.
But I'm saying you can't account for that differently with your staff, having separate staff do one, you know, if this staff only works long-term care and this staff only works hospital x-ray lab.
Right.
You're charging 100% of the cost to have that administration and that employee cost dedicated to the Medicare side of it. If you, you can't separate your staffing charges or.
No, that, and it's basically, it's primarily in the administrative and general costs that they would come up with, because the nursing home already has its own laundry, it has its own dietary, it's got its own maintenance and all of that. So we wouldn't be losing as much as if we were, if we actually went in there.
Providing everything under one roof, yeah.
And provided dietary, laundry, maintenance and all of that, they would take even more money away, because that isn't going directly to support treating Medicare patients in the critical access hospital.
So when we're talking about administration is where we will be losing the reimbursement right?
Yeah, and this is a back-of-the-envelope kind of thing, but yes, yes. I haven't asked our auditors, do you want to pro forma on this? But we, I did, basically, when I.
And I guess that would be because we would all be operating under the same board.
Right.
So, in other words, to, to make this work, we would basically need to establish a board like we did for the hospital, independent of you.
Right, and then we could contract for services then, and that would not have such an adverse effect on the cost report. But it would have to be, yes, you would have to have a separate not-for-profit board and some things of that nature, and then we could contract to provide some services.
And that contract, will that, would that affect the allocation of costs in for them?
No, to the best of my knowledge, in discussing this with our auditors and our accountants, no, the way that it would not.
So if, if we set up an independent board, and we contracted with the administration, contracted for administrative work from the county hospital?
Right.
You think that would work?
Yes.
There could be a working relationship that, because, because the, the county wouldn't, or excuse me, the hospital would not be an employee at that point. It's a, you're basically.
We would not be employing anybody at.
Wouldn't employ anyone and you wouldn't be an employee of.
Right, right.
Okay.
What about for billing services?
Yes, we could do, they could contract for billing. Those are the kinds of services, if there were an independent not-for-profit, much like, you know, it's not exactly the same with the hospital, because we're considered a municipal creation of the county itself. But if we were, if you had an independent not-for-profit board that was under, you know, the county commission appointed the board members, and things of that nature, then we could contract with that board to provide things like billing services or other administrative or even some healthcare services.
Could you give us just a quick few examples of what may work? You're saying billing services, what kind of healthcare services?
Well, the thing I'm thinking of right off the top of my head is we could probably pick up, one of the trends that we're reading about now is in smaller communities that the hospital contract with the Lincoln Park Manor or your long-term care facility to do the infection control kinds of things.
Nursing?
Yes, rather than.
Would that be like RN?
Well, infection, infection prevention is just making sure things are clean and neat and that you're following the protocol, you know, the aseptic protocol.
So that would still be administration kind of oversight? Are we talking about any nursing services? Because my concern is, we were told that one of the, no, were you gonna say?
To the best of my knowledge, right now, no, I don't think we could do that. And we could, we could, in, under a contract situation, depending on what you're contracting for, we could offer assistance in recruiting.
Here's my take on it. You know, we were told that one of the major expenses for the operation of the nursing home is the salary, you know, the payroll, and I understand that.
Yep, well, that's one of the major expenses for any healthcare.
For any business, really, it is, your manpower. But a large portion of what we have going on here is, I guess they call it, what is that called, the nursing agency, the agency? So, you know, why are we paying for out-of-county people to come and be paid through a separate entity to which they're contracting anyhow for nursing services? And I understand some of them need to be RNs and some of them have to have a higher level of education and performance ability.
We hire agency nurses as well, because we can't, because we can't always recruit local people to come to work for us. There may not be a lot of them, they may get offered, you know, Salina Regional is a good example. We compete with them on a pay and benefit basis, and they'll recruit people away from us. It's, it's hard to recruit nurses, they're just hard to find, so everybody uses agency. We go up and down on ours.
So do we have a disconnect between providing, you know, if we're spending this much money to contract those services, do we have some sort of disconnect between providing, you know, continuing education assistance for those people so that they go?
Well, I'm not sure what the situation is at Lincoln Park Manor. We provide.
I mean, just generally in this area, you know, if you have a high school graduate that might want to go to nursing school, and we're offering reimbursement for them to contract for to come back for two years, we're doing that at the hospital?
Yes, we are, we, we offer scholarships and.
To what extent? I mean, I feel like the numbers, yeah, to what extent are we covering their costs for schooling?
Well, I, I'm not sure. Our scholarships are generally around $1,500 per semester, but I think it's hot, you know, I don't know what the tuition at various places is around here, but we do support that. And then as part of the contract, there's a work relationship, it's like a forgivable loan to work for us for two or three years. Forgivable, it's not really a scholarship, it's more like a loan, because we have the work requirement. But we do that for, we'll do that for nursing, laboratory, radiology, any of those services. If you own a traumatic school as well, if the other person wants that, we, we offer that. But once the work requirement is done, if they.
They can leave.
If they feel like they want to jump up and move to Denver, if they're going to jump up, move to Denver, that's where the fun is, I guess.
So you said billing and infection control, is there anything else that?
There'd be a couple of, a couple of the areas we could do. You know, the other thing is, we all need registered dietitians to come in and supervise our menus. We contract with the registered dietitian to come in and do that, but that could be wrapped up in use the same person and do some, there are some things we could look at administratively.
Do you know what they're doing currently for dietitian services?
I'm sure they're coming through, yeah. They wouldn't have one of them, I'm sure.
Right. But some of those you're saying.
What about human resources?
Yes, we could contract for that as well, and, you know, do some things of that nature.
I guess the, one of the other problems that we continue to have is that skilled care, Medicare skilled care, provide, you know, and that was one of the things that I was looking at when we were looking at this, working together, is to make sure that we were getting all the dollars we could, both at the home and at the hospital. And certainly that is an insanity to keep people in your facility, and it is also one thing that the nursing home badly needs to generate revenue, you know? And so, you know, I, as I looked at that, I was wondering if that could be a win situation for us, where we would.
Well, yes and no. It's a competitive situation when it comes right down to that. That's part of the revenue that we currently generate out of the services we provide to long-term care residents here. There are some of those skilled days. And, but that's not to say that there's not enough to go around. It, it, part of it is having nurses.
Yeah, yeah.
Is one of the things.
Your agency staff, are those mostly RNs? Do you, you?
We agency staff both RNs and nurses aides as needed. We try to recruit and train our own nurses aides quite a bit. In fact, we've done joint training with Lincoln Park Manor on this. We work with, we work with a lot of high school students, trying to get them interested to work as an aide in that they might, and we see this in general, that they will sometimes want to get, you know, an ADN and then a BSN and go forward with that. And that's always a good investment for local people.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
I brought back again, I showed you, I think, once before, a policy on the profile testing, physical capacity profile testing with employees. And they have assessed each of the positions, come up with, a rating, you'd say would be a recommendation for where to accept, like if the job's four, maybe start by accepting a three and a half or above, in order to like not discriminate against like women and things like that in some of the positions, and kind of like a good place to start. Each of them is here in this book, and I did add to each of the job descriptions a statement regarding work level, like this one here is work level three, medium work, applicant must attain a 2.5 or above on their physical capacity profile.
Is this actually, like, did you give us this, it's generated by the company? Or did you write?
We took, what I did was I took Salina County's information from the company and a couple others and put it together, and I have sent it to Jennifer. And then I added the ratings in the other day and sent it back to her.
What was the name of that company?
Occupational Performance Corp. And they're out of Salina.
And so I just, but we approved them to.
Yes, yes.
So why are they not providing this to us? Why are they not giving us our own scale? Why are we making?
Wait, that's a policy for Lincoln County to have regarding testing.
And I'm saying we'll do. Didn't they give us suggestions from?
Yes, they did. And I put them in.
I would like to see what they're actually.
That's what I said, they're here.
Okay, I would like to see them.
Yes, and that's why I was saying that I have each of them here, and I included the job description in each one of them, and I highlighted the section that I added regarding the testing.
But I'm saying you're giving us this.
I'm giving you this too, just one second. I was trying to tell you what it is and what I did, so that you could see what I did. And I have each position marked out, because we're going to need to approve them and sign off on them. So I put them all in a notebook together for you guys to have. Because someone from the county will need to sign off on the job levels. He said it's, if the board wants to do that, that's great. If you guys want to have department heads do it, that's great. You want me to sign off on it, someone needs to though in order for us to move forward. He said Everett County does it differently, it's what you guys would like. So I brought them to you guys to see if you'd like to do that and to go through them. And on each one, I added and highlighted so it'd be easy for you to see what we added to the description. If you would like me to email you copies for you guys to be able to review.
What was the cost associated, was it like $90 a person for the testing?
90 or 105, it was, it's right, it's right around $100 per person. They offer some other services that might be beneficial down the road, like they could be a collection site for us. So for instance, we could make an offer to an applicant, a conditional offer of employment, we can send them there, they can do this test, and they can collect for our drug test while we're there, that will help as well, kind of street market. We use, we would still use the same lab that we use through, that used to be TMA, Performance One, it's not Performance One, they changed their company name. It used to be T M H C Services, you see it every month on the billing, they do our pre-employment, post-accident, reasonable suspicion, random testing and all of that. And a lot of times, either the collector comes out, or they go to the hospital or the health department to have their drug tests collected and it gets shipped to the lab. And they would do the exact same thing. They would just collect it while they're doing this test, and they'd send it to the lab with the company that we already contracted with.
At a fee, was that?
The fee that is there, they send to T M H C who pays that fee. Like Madonna charges a fee to draw, and she sends the bill to T M H C and they pay her for that. So there would be no additional on that unless they do, we leave that company and go someplace else. So there would be no extra cost for that to the county. They would do what Madonna does, they would just bill T M H C.
Yeah, if you could email that out there, I think that would be, give us some time to look that over.
Okay.
Highlight the parts.
Can you email it?
Okay, I can do that. I actually went myself, Dawn went with me, and we went and we checked out the facility, how the testing works, and I actually did the test and went through the whole process that all the employees would go through as well to see what it was like and how it worked and whatnot. And they did a really nice job, and I'm not as physically capable as I thought that I would be, just a few jobs I don't qualify for. But it was good, it was good to see what they do and how they do it. Wasn't quite what I expected. They do a very thorough job.
I'm still confused because these, these don't look like they were produced by the occupational performance. Are you saying this is what they gave you?
They gave me, that is theirs. They produced that where they came out and assessed each position. And where their work level would be. They produced that. I just printed them and put them in the notebook. And then the job descriptions are the ones that you guys approved. And what I did was added a statement regarding the testing and what level they would need to, and whether it was medium or heavy work or.
Well, what kind of stands out to me and why I question this is, okay, so paramedic, that would be your most highly skilled position in our EMS department. And it's saying, I mean, nothing, everything is in the least required column.
It's not least required column and it's.
It's not skilled. It's least percentage of what you're doing.
Okay.
But that's just because.
Let's go back. Maybe I didn't explain very well. What they are rating is the physical, the physically demanding aspects of the position.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is I'm nervous if they're, if they're saying that the physical requirements for a paramedic are less than that of a deputy, that's a little, that's a little nerve wracking to me because I would think that a ner, if you're getting evaluated on your physical capacity as a paramedic, I would think you should be able to kneel, jump, you know.
They have to be able to, yes.
Whatever that, right, but it's at the least percentage of their.
No. Can you pass back the book? That's why I said maybe I didn't do a very good job. Job level one is the lowest level that a position would be. And a job level five is the highest a position would be.
Right. And what we have on our sheet says that you have to be no more physically fit to be a jailer than a paramedic. I'm a little bit concerned about if a paramedic is expected to lift a body or be down.
They don't lift a body by themselves. If you, if you look through here, if you look through. And I, they said the work level, it would be considered a work level four unless we made some changes into our current policy where multiple person lifts were required. And then it would be a job level three. They came out and they physically weighed how much strength it would take to lift the cot, to push the cot, to load the cot. They had a person get on the cot as a patient and they, they tested what the level would be to lift the cot, to push the cot, to pull the cot. They physically lifted and measured what it would take to move the cylinders and their bags, their, their jump bags. They measured all of those. And where the line was for them between a job level three and a job level four is whether or not it was a single or a multiple person lift. If the person, EMT, paramedic, whatever skill level, had to lift, yes, a person all alone by themselves, it would be a job level four. But where there were two-person crew and they have the ability to always call for a lift assist, it could be considered a job level three.
I guess it just, it alarms me that our truck driver has to be in.
And if you look through this, this is something I will tell you that I had no idea and I would have disagreed. Opening the nineteen ninety Mack truck hood, a hundred and forty-five pounds of force to open the hood of the truck. That's why theirs is, is, is higher. The two thousand and eight Mack truck only eighty pounds. Lifting of the snow fence is seventy-five pounds. Changing out the torch bottle, a hundred and thirty pounds. They lift more weights than I thought that they did. You know, we discussed having the hundred pound. There are times that they're lifting significantly more all by themselves. That's why theirs is rated as a four. Just the chains to put on the motor grinders, they weigh sixty-five pounds apiece. I didn't realize that their blades and their chains weighed near as much. I didn't realize they needed a hundred and forty-five pounds of force for one person to open the hood of that truck. That's why theirs is a job level four. I was very, very impressed with the level of testing that they did at each position. And I went with them around the courthouse to do the janitor one. I went with them when they went to the sheriff's department and they went down to EMS. And one of the staff members from public works went around when they did theirs and showed them everything that they needed to look at.
Who was that?
Uh, Stephen Weber. They asked for an employee that actually.
Does it?
Right, rather than like, and it just happened that they thought it would take all day down there and, or I thought it would take longer. So Dustin and Ryan were in when they went over there and I just went along with them. And then there was two or three people at the EMS building when they went there. Yes.
Is this what you're emailing to us that, what they?
They sent me all these and I can forward all of those to you. And you can even see, this is, I'm only a three point one. Because they, they did the same testing for me that they would do for anyone.
Just to get a scale, a base scale.
Just to get a scale. Well, I thought that it would help if I understood more what they do and how they do it and the way that they do it. And it wasn't what I thought it was going to be. There was a lot more involved. And it was, it was a good experience. And Dawn went with me to listen and to hear. And they went through with us everything and breaking down what they do and how they're testing it.
I'm sure they're gonna have, the employees are gonna have questions about it, so.
I've suggested to some of the department heads if they want, yes. And I thought that that would, that would help. And I suggested if they wanted to send somebody to try it out, that they could and whatnot. So kind of, since I suggested it, I thought that maybe I should give it a try myself.
See this, I was just still confused. Work level four for a deputy is exerting fifty to a hundred pounds of force occasionally and or twenty to fifty pounds of force frequently and or ten to twenty pounds of force constantly. And work-related tasks associated responsible for apprehension and restraint of inmates. Obviously, that takes some physical capacity. Duties include removing animal carcass from roads and highways as well as animal control of live animals and must wear personal protection gear and service equipment on a daily basis of thirty-two pounds. I'm not sure how a paramedic would have less to do than that. I mean.
It's not about less to do. They went through and they measured the weights of their equipment, their gear. And they discussed with them how their day functions, how their calls run. Same thing with law enforcement as well.
Yeah, and maybe it's just because we have, we're not really busy, you know, to the point where they're saying they're doing that on a daily basis. Because it says exerting, under their requirements, it says exerting twenty to fifty pounds occasionally. Whereas under the deputy, it was fifty to a hundred pounds occasionally. Well, occasionally on a body with two people, a body weighs two hundred pounds plus, that's a hundred pounds apiece on a two-person lift. So that, to me, doesn't make any sense.
Well, they roll the patient a lot of times or they use whatever they use to get them onto the cot. And then it's raising the cot and pushing and pulling the cot, whether it's out of a bank and whatnot. This is their area. They do this. They came out, they tested, they measured, they weighed everything.
The culture power lift.
And then, yes, and that, they said that made a world of difference. Some of the things that we found when they came, like with the cot, they did show, show them that if they reorganize how they load the equipment on the cot, it reduces the weight to lift the cot. With all of the weight on the end of the cot where they have to pick it up and push it in, it was, I can't remember what it was. It was over a hundred and some pounds. But then when they showed them if they distributed the weight differently, the weights and the force to lift the cot with me on the cot was less than with the gear.
So who does provide training on that?
Brett was right there and they talked about that. And he said, we need to change how we're doing that. And he said he was more than willing. And they're, they looked at that and the fact that they could rearrange how they put their equipment on the cot so that more of the weight is distributed on the front end of the cot. Because when I got on the cot and they lifted it up, I didn't understand why it wasn't more because I weigh more than the gear. And they said it's because all of your body weight is more towards your upper body as on the front end where the power lift helps get that in. And by shifting the weight and their bags to the front of the cot instead of the back of the cot, then that would reduce the force that it takes for the employee to get the cot in and out of the ambulance. Never did I, I wouldn't have thought of that. Never would I have realized that. But they showed them that. And Brett said, we can change that and we can re-proportion how we're putting things on the cot to make that less, left, less forced to lift and want to, and make it easier on the staff. And a lot of times there's, there's always two of them and sometimes there's a third or law enforcement there. And he said that as long as there's two that are performing the lift, then it distributes, distributes the weight more evenly and it takes less force for the employee to lift the cot or the patient and whatnot. So he did show them ways to do things a little, a little differently. It made some suggestions to some changes to make things easier physically on employees.
Okay, well, if you email that stuff out to us, we're gonna look it over.
Okay. Sounds good. And I'll probably go ahead then and get on and come back next week and we can kind of go through that.
Thank you.
We're changing next week to, to Thursday.
Oh, yes, Thursday, same time.
Same time, so quick.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll go here now.
Morning.
Good morning.
Start out with this morning, I have two wage changes. The first is with Equipment Operator Jesse. He's, reached his six months. He's obtained his CDL. And we recommend the fifty cent increase for six months in meeting requirements. And the other is for Rob Zaco. He completed his six months. He's obtained his CDL. And we are also changing his job title from bridge crew to truck driver.
So you're changing this employee from bridge crew to truck driver.
Correct.
And there's a, there's a reduction in pay because, but that, but that, this new pay includes the fifty percent increase for time?
Fifty cents an hour, I guess.
Fifty, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. So what has been happening in the meantime while that person hasn't been serving on the bridge crew where they got hired at the higher salary rate?
He's been getting the other rate.
The bridge crew rate the whole time, even though you removed him from the bridge crew?
It wasn't completely removed. He just was not working.
Every day.
As a whole group too.
It's my understanding that there was some sort of.
I think that if we're going to discuss specific employees, we need to be in executive session.
Okay, I move to enter into executive session for five minutes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
I think we've said too much already.
Well, no, I mean, the, the change is public information. I mean, there's a decrease, but there's also an increase for time put in. So it would be, move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Wait, I have, we have to have a second, we have to have a second issue here.
You can say it.
I would, right, but there's a, there's a justification. That's the topic. There's a justification. Reason for job change status, job, job status change, excuse me. Job status change. Um, the board and the supervisor personnel, the highway clerk.
I won't second until human resources is included.
You can add that.
Can you want me to stay?
Yes.
I will second.
Ten.
Or before they.
Go back in.
So you can go back in.
If you want.
Sure.
Uh, you want to recall? Session? No, they won't, but call, call the order again and then.
All meetings back over.
I move to re-enter into executive session for the same purposes for five minutes.
Well, she's gonna go, yeah.
I have a motion to go back into executive session for five minutes.
Same, non-elected personnel. Okay. No, that's okay. Move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Job status change.
I'll second, but I want discussion.
Have motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess legally, this conversation has not dealt with a specific employee.
Yes, it absolutely has.
No, it has dealt with two employees. And I question whether, is that appropriate, Dawn? Do you know?
Well, the subject matter probably ought to be that you're discussing not the job status change, but discussing.
Amend, amend. I will amend because actually the reason why it ended up into two people instead of one is because there was, I'm, I'm questioning the complaints, employee complaint forms. And why we have one complaint when there have been multiple situations. But there's only one recorded complaint from the department, even though multiple situations exist.
So how about?
Complaint, job status change.
Discipline report. And complete complaint of forms and job status.
Yes. But thank you for the clarification. I do think that's important.
Do we? Can we do two things in executive session?
Yes, as long as you state the subject matters.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those papers out. Have a motion to deal, six months increased. Just lack of.
I would move to increase just as accurately for six months, fifty cents.
Yeah, I'll second. I'll second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those papers out.
Aye.
Obsteing.
Okay. That's job status change from bridge crew to truck driver. For Robert Zaco. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? I will second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those papers out.
Aye.
Obsteing.
Last week, we interviewed an individual for equipment operator. Through that interview, we feel that he'd be a better fit to bridge crew than the equipment operator, motor grader position. And he felt so also. I don't believe we advertised for that yet. And would you guys like us to advertise for a set period for that position? Or would you allow us to extend an offer for employment?
How did you come about this interview if you didn't have an advertiser?
For equipment operator.
Oh, sorry. And now you have an opening on the bridge group. I misunderstood. And now you have an opening on the bridge crew, I misunderstood.
And they're all equipment operator positions?
Yes, they're equipment operator, one is just...
Could you explain what you think qualifies that person for bridge crew more than what you were originally looking at him to do for equipment? Equipment as in motor grader or equipment as in...
Yes. Obtaining a route and holding it, you know, I think based in discussion with his personality, working by himself, as he would on a motor grader, day in and day out, would be very monotonous for him. He prefers to have a change of scenery and do different tasks, operate different pieces of machinery. The individual has quite a bit of experience with machinery, not a motor grader though. I believe he's held two different positions within KDOT so far in his career, so, you know, he's got some experience. But I guess I don't. It never was specifically advertised for bridge crew, so I wanted to make sure that would be accepted.
So would we have said that in the ad, Deborah?
We said that we were looking for an equipment operator. And we did say the motor grader route, we really haven't had a lot of interest in it. And the bridge crew is always very difficult to hire for because it is more physically demanding, because there is a larger variety of equipment to operate and different things like that. And he did, he seemed like he had a better attention to detail, things like that.
How many applicants did we have for this first round that we were advertising?
We interviewed him and another gentleman, and the other gentleman, his family decided not to move to this area from Hayes, and he had concerns about the increase in pay that he would take to move. And his family decided that a better fit for them was to stay. And he would have been a terrific fit for the motor grader position, he would have been a, he would have been great. And he had a large skill set, and I feel like he would have been a good...
Did we have more applicants than just two, or we only ended up interviewing two out of how many?
We did interview somebody for the truck driver.
In a world?
But, yeah.
Well, I don't see, I mean, I don't see a problem with us advertising and deciding where to put that person when they apply, but...
He did seem like he'd be a really, a really good fit for us. He has good experience with the state.
Past experience, we have someone that's interested in being on the bridge crew. We probably should go with it because it's a hard decision to fill. It's not air conditioned, it's not...
He doesn't have direct experience with building bridges, or working on bridges, but with equipment, yes. The operation familiarity with those. You know, it's very hard to find anybody that has...
It would be, and just my...
Experience in our position.
I felt like he was very trainable, easily trainable for the bridge crew and would be a good fit for them. And that with the other positions, it would be a lot more extensive one-on-one training that would be required.
I guess my question basically though is, are we going, are we, have we messed up the line in our advertisement? That we did not, was it going to be equally, equal opportunity, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think so, I think we're okay. I mean, ultimately, it's your decision, and if you want us, and we told them that, that if you guys wanted us to run, to run the bridge crew out in hopes that somebody did apply, but like I said, they are all equipment operator positions.
I don't have a problem with doing it. I don't have a problem, I can think of a word.
You have a name?
It wouldn't be any different than hiring him as a blade operator, two weeks later transferring to bridge crew.
That seemed a little not appropriate.
Yeah, I mean...
His name is Gregory May.
I'd move, we employ Gregory May to the...
Extend an offer to him.
Extend an offer to him.
I'll have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those papers are out.
Aye.
And then will you come back to actually employ him once he's passed all this test?
I think that would be the correct way to do it.
I'll contact him again.
I don't know if you all received a copy of this letter from the state on the Highland Lake Dam Safety Inspection Report sent out last week. Basically telling us what we need to do to get the dam up to their standards.
If we choose to maintain the road?
We, you've contacted the state on the ONE, the ownership encumbrance, that we had the title report done for, and they have not responded back with a yes, no, maybe, or anything, so...
So we still don't know if we can close the road and not?
Well, we can always close it, I guess.
No, in order to not have to do repairs to the culvert, or the, whatever you want to call it, under the dam. Are you saying that might have to happen regardless of what we do?
No.
Well, I think for the time being, we just wait until the state reviews and gets back to us with that title report. And I tried to put spell in my email, hey, you know, that, that dam's on the north side of that section line, which is in the underes. And they're technically, I would say, the owners of the dam. And then so since then, we talked to the head, the water structure engineer, and he said he was swamped, that he'd try to look at it. So I think for the time being, we just maybe let him.
Just sit over.
Yeah, and then just see what he says, and then we can maybe talk about it again, get a plan of action. But yeah, so if you do, I think the county can go cut the trees if they want. As far as replacing the outlet pipe, there's going to have to be a private set of plans put together and a permit through DWR. There's going to have to be a little bit of work there.
Well, I think there's a little bit more work at home to do on somebody else's deal. It's, can't get pricing.
Who put the dam, who actually constructed the dam?
Landowners in the 50s.
The current landowner, or?
No.
It's...
It's been sold.
It's changed.
Wants to...
It's been a deal.
Nobody wants to accept it.
I'm just going to read the, what the Department of Ag said that we need to do. All trees and brush should be removed from the upstream and downstream slopes. After trees have been removed from both slopes, all voids will need to be filled and compacted. The upstream slope needs reshaping to repair areas damaged by wave action. Remove all brush from principal spillway inlet pipe. Replace the thirty-inch corrugated metal outlet pipe. Contact Department of Water Resources before any modifications are made. As a permit will be required, I'm sure, cost, money. The undercut area on the downstream slope should be backfilled and compacted. All disturbed areas should be reseeded and regularly maintained. But then underneath that, it says that responsibility for a dam's safety rests solely with the owner of the dam. But our road that we own goes over it, so we're still...
Well, there never was a right-of-way open, because I believe from the original article, it stated that the farmers would donate the ground if the county would maintain it. There never was a right-of-way that I'm aware of. Through all my research, and like I said, this was done in the 50s.
And was that before Wilson?
Wasn't there some question about building it?
That was in the 70s, I think, for Wilson Lake.
Sixties.
Sixties.
It wasn't really technically approved.
So it doesn't serve the same purpose now?
They wanted to build it anyhow.
Yeah, it made headlines, so I think they went ahead and approved it, and I...
Brock Newer has a file that his uncle kept information on this thing from the time it was conceived until it was dedicated. And there's various articles from different magazines and stuff in there, but they're...
So we just basically at this point need to wait for response to your inquiry?
I would think so, they sent us that letter, so I responded and asked for kind of follow-up, hey, how long's it going to take? And I never got a response. So I think maybe wait another couple of weeks and I can make a call.
That makes sense. I had a question for you, I think after we had spoken about, we received a letter of concern, the first bridge that the water, when it's let out from the dam at the lake. It's six to seven.
Yeah, we went and looked at it.
Right. Where are we in addressing that, what do we need to do? What is going to be the follow-up there? I'm still receiving questions, we're in the rainy season, I guess if you want to call it that. I mean, we haven't been completely flooded or anything, but...
So we went out and we talked to the Wilson Lake and asked them, you know, is there by chance we could maybe shut the water off? So the county could maybe put some concrete, that was the first option we looked at. They said they've constantly got to be let. Yeah, more like dig down and put a little footing around that scour area. The state said they cannot, they've got to always let out like five thousand CFS. So they're not...
There won't ever be a shut-off of flow?
Yeah, there's always going to be water there, so we went back to the drawing table, and we've talked about driving some sheet piling in behind existing piling. And in this, you know, since we're not doing any work down in the channel, we want to be any permits or anything like that, so the county could just... So I think that's what we've kind of...
Yeah, we kind of discussed excavating and then driving sheet pile behind where that is rusted away there.
Is that going to address the deterioration though? Because I thought the deterioration was happening where there is no piling, that's...
Now, the sheet pile, the rest of metal is the concern, and that's what sheet piling is, is what that is. So we will drive in basically like a false wall behind it, and that will serve as the wall as that other one continues to deteriorate.
Right.
Just on that one side?
No, we do both sides.
And then we drive it six foot or so below the bottom of the channel. So you can get an extra correction.
So is that something we can, I mean, what's going to be the cost on that, is that something we can do in the near future?
I think it's something we can do, it's a...
Is that a bridge crew activity?
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Do we need to rent any equipment to do it?
We're going to try using our crybrotory compactor to push the sheet piling in. If we don't experience a bunch of rock, we should be able to achieve that with the sheet piling.
And so how far into the future are we looking to address that?
We're several weeks at the very, very earliest. You know, I honestly think it'd be best to have a full crew to assist with that.
What's the schedule for the bridge crew look like right now for the next month? What's on their agenda?
Oh, we still got a couple washouts we've been working on up here from that grain in the northwest corner of the county. And we got wing wall repair on a bridge up there, and a couple other bridges there that need some attention in that area too. And we got an old arch bridge, it's all fallen off of it and stuff, we're going to try...
Which arch bridge? Which arch bridge?
It's up...
That Eightieth, Eightieth or is that...
No, it's on, be on X-ray.
Is it a bridge or just a culvert?
It's just an arch culvert, arches, that's all it is.
I have had a couple of phone calls, I think, I want to say, is that Eightieth that goes north from Union? Yeah, and the railings or banisters, whatever you want to call them, that were up there in the, in the Crick Creek. And I think it's to the point where there's been so much material compacted on top of that structure. I mean, it looks like it's not, it's a little dangerous. I mean, anyone could just drive off the edge. I don't know what the plan is there.
What do you want to do, you want to stop traffic through there? Combines, big trap, four or five tractors, that stuff's going through. Or do you want to do it like it is?
And let someone fall off the side?
Well, that's reading it's off, because all the wide machinery and stuff, the bridge is only about sixteen foot wide. It's not that wide, even if you leave them railings on. They're going through there with dual foot-tractors, four or five combines. They're running up on that railing, hanging their duels off of the edge to get through. You make them deter around, we can build it all back up. That's what you want, make them deter around. We can leave it as it is.
How deep, is it pretty deep?
Yes, I don't know, more than twelve feet probably. Fifteen maybe, that's pretty.
A layer of rock there, and then there's kind of a windrow and stuff there where he blades against it each time. But to drop wood on that, play that fast, they've all got knocked off, so they can get through there with wide equipment.
Okay, because I was saying from the bottom of the channel to the top of the deck, if it's like less than eight foot, then you could just remove the guardrail. There's been some studies done.
Like I say, all it is, is just the rock that was laid up on the arch when they built the arches. And it's got taken down so that you can...
It's a pretty deep... White or something.
Like I say, that depends.
I took a look at the report that you gave us from the Mobile 311 program, and I'm seeing that you have, you have the office inputting some information, and you have about three motor grader operators. I guess two questions, are you encouraging all of the motor grader operators to input their records this way? Are you going to continue to just let three out of the ten potential at any given time? And, and that's one issue I'd like you to address, the other issue I'd like you to address is, is there a date on these so that we know when it was reported? And is there a column for a checkmark, as in it was taken care of? So two, two things there, are you going to continue to just let three out of ten people utilize the program? And then is there a way to record an input time so that we know when this was recorded versus, and/or a column for finished and completed task?
Yeah, those dates are available, those were just uncompleted jobs at this time. I thought the date was on there, but maybe it's not.
I, I don't have one, but it looks like the columns were kind of...
Yeah, it's hard to...
So that you could read the whole comment.
Yes, if you print out the whole report, it's going to print across six pages in landscape. There's a lot of different information that is not really necessary.
What is that first column, it's like just a random number, it looks like, because the address is on the second column, the first... Oh, no, it is an address, it's a number address, and the road is the next column.
Yes, yeah.
So for example, I have East Kiowa, three different markings where he's requesting spot graveling. And then Thirtieth Road, another request, three, three more requests for spot graveling. So then how do you track in here, is there another column that says, yes, we went and delivered gravel to these places where it was requested? Or who looks at this and says, oh, he wanted gravel, you know, these three different places? Who looks at that and then makes the phone call and has the truck driver obtain the gravel and deliver?
I try to coordinate that with where we're at, where we're working, where it's going to be.
So is there a column for...
Completed work, yeah, you can, there's a completed work within the program, when the job gets done, you go completed work, and then it boots it to a different file.
One suggestion I have is combine these two between description and comments, because one operator is putting them, putting all the comments in the one, and then you have two, you know, one operator's putting all the comments in the description.
It should all be in the description and...
So then delete that, can you, can you modify the Excel spread, or is that, I'm assuming it's like an Excel?
Yeah.
Because if you combine those two, then all the writing is perpendicular, you know, so that...
I could probably play around with that and get it to do what you're asking, I see what you're saying.
You have two, so they can choose, they either write in this column or that column, and then it makes you two columns. If you combine them into one, then you could have that completion column so we can see the date. I mean, it would be good for us to be able to track how long it takes when someone requests spot graveling for, because here I see the same request going in, like, for example, we have 407 East Kiowa Drive, which is kind of near where I live, spot graveling needed. And then I have it again, 407 East Kiowa Drive, spot graveling needed, so I don't...
Because when that gets assigned, it gets assigned to a couple different people, that's the reason why it shows up numerous times.
Assigned?
Yes.
See, when it comes in, different territories, different people.
Yeah, so that job got assigned to more than one person, not just the blade guy, it got...
Truck driver.
No, no, not to the truck driver, but it got also assigned to the other blade guy in that territory. Because a lot of times when they're laying gravel, both the blade guys are there working and taking them, getting that job completed. So therefore, I will assign it to both of them, so that's the reason why it shows up twice.
But it says that, that, if I'm... But it says that, that, if I'm reading this right, the second, the third column is the person who flagged, like, it's the person who's inputting the request. Well, that's the same person twice.
Yeah, 'cause he inputted it the first time. And then when I assign it, it goes to two people. And you'll look underneath the name of the heading up there, and it will show the employee that it was assigned to.
It's just assigned back to him?
Yes, and the other one would be to a different employee. 'Cause they didn't, two people didn't create the request, the same person created the one request.
Mm-hmm. But wouldn't it say, if it was flagged, then wouldn't it say it was done by the office then?
No, 'cause I didn't create the job. I am assigning the job.
So basically, we can't tell anything from this until we have a column that says, yes, it was done and the date?
You can tell a lot of stuff by it, but you're not gonna know whether it's been done or it hasn't been done.
Well, I think from the table, the only thing we can look at is when the request was made and when it was completed. I mean, I'm already being told that I'm trying to micromanage by asking questions. So if you don't like micromanaging, then you need to give a report that says, this is what was requested and when, and then this is when it was done.
And nothing, unless something's been done in the last week, none of that has been done.
Which goes back to-
A completed report, I did not-
You're not right, every time one shows up there, they send a request in. It's not gonna be done the next day.
Oh, no one, no one thinks anything-
It might be ten months, three months.
Well, I don't even know when this was generated, Bob. This could've been from January for all I know. There's no date on it. It was printed April twenty-third because we requested it, but I, I have no idea, I mean, some of these, there was, I, I guess this is what you gave us as far as a completion list of what? Because it says finalized date on this one, on the first page report, does that mean that is the list of the working jobs that, and then when it says finalized, does that mean they've been completed? Or is that just the, the request still? 'Cause that's not the same spreadsheet as the Mobile 311. Did you create that one separately?
I believe so, yes. That's a different, shows that it's completed.
Yeah. Yeah, I can put the date in there, that's fine, that's easy to do.
And then, so my other question, are you going to continue to have three out of ten operators utilizing this?
That's gonna vary according to what conditions and things they have out there. If they got, one guy may have spot gravellings here in four places, next operator may not have any. So he's not gonna put anything down.
We need to be, we need to get going here.
No, actually, we're in my time slot, so I'm finding-
If you wanna give your time slot, that's fine.
Yeah, I think this is important, and we've been, we've been working on this-
We got an engineer that we're paying to sit here that probably has other things he could be doing, so-
Do you have questions for him? That would be interesting if you had some questions for him.
I don't have anything specific. I don't have anything specific to ask you, no.
I do.
I'm sure you do.
We have, we have a question, about, I have a question, and some people in my district have a question about a bridge concern.
Okay.
Sixty-five is north of sixty-seven that you looked at.
Okay.
And it was reduced, we talked about maybe two years ago from, I don't know what the tonnage was prior, because I never looked, but it's at three ton now. Which means very few pieces of equipment and/or large vehicles can actually get across it legally, so to speak. Um, it would be a large project that we would need the federal funding for. Are you planning on, you know, as you're being active here once a month, are you planning on helping with that type of paperwork? I know, Michael, you've been doing most of it in the past, applying for-
So there's an off-system bridge program, and yeah, we do it, we, um, I think we were discussing it this morning a little bit. Um, but yeah, we would do the application for free, don't worry about that. Um, they're gonna probably call for projects in probably a month, so they will send a letter out to the county saying, hey, um, we're asking for projects for the office's bridge program. Um, and then it's pretty much an application you fill out. Um, I was meeting with the state at a bridge inspection refreshment class, and they said they're gonna, they typically look at the sufficiency rating, um, need. Um, so I thought maybe, you know, if we do decide on a bridge we wanna apply for, we could maybe get some letters of support or something from some of the locals.
Sounds like a good idea.
And, yeah, so they look at that, um, sufficiency rating's a big one. Um, and, yeah, so it is competitive with all, you know, the rest of the counties and states that do apply.
And I think how, we've gotten two years in a row, right, and-
Every other year.
We didn't have one two years ago, just last-
Two years ago, yes.
Well, we have one this year, it's eighty-seven.
It's just now getting killed.
Oh, I say eighty-seven. The approval was two years ago.
Yeah, it takes two year broad, a year for design and a year for construction, yes, it takes a little bit after you get selected.
Well, I would say that's one that we really need to look at. It's, it serves a purpose as a throughway to get from any of these north and south roads west. Otherwise, you have to drive to the pavement of eighteen to get all the way across down the Highway two thirty-two, and then you'd have to come back.
Right, and you said that one was sixty-five?
Yes.
So we, um, Michael had me look at it this morning. So we were, we were originally, um, looking at off-system one oh seven just because it has a, you know, the sufficiency rating is a twenty-six point five oh, which is that's-
Where's one oh seven?
Southwest of town here. Was it one eighty-third? Is that what it was gonna be?
Yeah.
So we were originally looking at that because it has such-
Yeah, it's one oh seven A.
The sufficiency rating's a twenty-six point five, so that one has a pretty good shot of getting selected. Um, the sixty-five I looked at this morning has a sufficiency rating of thirty-eight point nine oh. That's, that may be tough getting it selected. Typically, you know, less than thirty are the ones that do get selected.
So why, why would you think it was reduced? Was, was that through their inspection that it got redu, that it was reduced?
I think it was in state fracture critical slash when they're doing their new bridge ratings statewide. It pulled a random test on that.
Okay, 'cause then if you, you can't post anything less than three tons, are you gonna close it? 'Cause it was six, and the bridge file was when it was six.
But I'm saying if it still has a sufficiency rating that is borderline, why would they reduce it to the least tonnage?
Right, and then-
You know, that doesn't make sense.
And then that, since it got reduced down to three, that is gonna affect some of the numbers in the web portal when they run the sufficiency rating calculation. So that may bring that sufficiency rating down further, since it's, you know, so much below the, the legal loads. So, and we're supposed to do the bridge inspections or the bridge inspection-
It's fall.
It's fall.
Correct.
So that would all get updated and that sufficiency rating would get recalculated then.
Um, something that I just briefly listened with Tanner about on, you know, I think that bridge may qualify for rehabilitation too. Um, as far as the footings and everything, I think everything checks out great on it, the piers and abutments and everything. You know, we may be able to just go in and eliminate the, uh, uh, trust part of it. And I believe the trust part's good. It's the two approach spans that are built on timber that's actually the true problem with it.
So is that something we could possibly do?
I think it's a little bit beyond.
We could look at it, but you'd have to take a segment off, replace.
But when we're talking about, let's say you applied for one oh seven, I mean, that's gonna, that whole entire project is gonna be subbed out.
Yeah.
So we still have the capacity for us internally to address something. And last time I asked about sixty-five, it was, oh, no, that's gonna be a million and a half dollar bridge because it's-
To replace it, to, to replace it.
But that's what I was told. You know, I bring it up and it's like, oh, we have to replace it, it's a million and a half dollars. So I think what we need to do is determine, is it fixable without replacing the entire thing? What do we need to do? Are we capable of doing it?
You understand fixing it isn't going to get it up to a-
Well, it wouldn't be unlimited, no, but I believe it would, well, I'm not an engineer, I don't wanna say until they put numbers in. But I think it would get it up around twenty, thirty ton easily.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the load rating, and then look at those approach spans. And maybe if we can put some other beams in, yeah, it'll have to take a little bit of analysis on that part.
And if it's not something our crews can handle, it'll be something somebody can contract down for a reasonable rate other than- Rather than an entire replacement. Yeah.
Yeah, we could, if you want, I can, we can look into it.
If the board would like to, too, can you?
Okay, yeah.
You know, I, I think that that particular bridge has the option to be rehabilitated. I think it's a prime character for that, and it, it also does have a lot of character with it, stonework and everything else that's there with it too.
My next question is, when are we going to, I mean, we're coming into the summer season, the dry season due. When are we going to look at contracting out some tuck pointing on these stone bridges? And/or who, who needs to do some of this stone repair? Because we talked about this last year, nothing's done. Every single year that we go through this, there's much deterioration on these structures that will not be able to be rehabilitated at all because of the material, the manpower, the skill that's needed for that kind of a structure. I mean-
Yeah, if you guys would like me to, we can, uh, look through the files and find one and go visually look at one, and then we can send it out for this.
I think the prime example is the one on Union. That's a highly traveled road, and that double arch, i- isn't it double?
The Ash Grove double arch?
I think that's a good starting point, at least from my perspective. Because the deterioration there seems minimal, but it's, it's going to be exponential as it goes on, the water flows through there. And right now, it's just what you call is, what, wing walls out into the-
Hub guards.
Well, on the top, yes, but also, you know, on one side is much less deteriorated than the other, probably because of how the water flows. But if we don't start to look at that, at least getting a cost in front of us to see what we can afford this year versus next year, et cetera.
We did have a project in Barbara, Barb County that we can tuck pointing then, so maybe we'll look for some costs. Figure out what contractor did it, still.
Hell, we got a pretty good list of contractors to work from there.
And I think if you chose several within an area, it seems like there are quite a few in that northwestern quadrant. You know, that may be something that we can get bids on for someone to do several projects within an area.
Have to look at the funds for, to do more than one, for sure.
Where would that come from? What, the contracting portion of your budget, or where, where have you done that?
That would come from our bridge fund, special bridge, I believe, is where we can bring that from.
How much did we have in the special machinery that was, we just spent the five hundred and whatever it was, thousand for the three new pieces of equipment? Did we have to draw, will we have to draw from, I mean, is that completely funded out, the special equipment? Or where's that coming from? Do you, do you guys know?
I think most of it's gonna come from the special equipment.
There's a large, there's a large, we have paid for those, right?
No.
Okay, it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand, I think, there in the special equipment, so we're looking about two hundred thousand.
Coming.
But we will sell, we will sell that, sell the machinery, so we'll have some recovery.
A little bit, yes.
So you're gonna take the remainder from capital outlay?
I believe that's where it'll come from.
And where do we input the money from when we have revenue generated by sales?
It comes into their front end.
I mean, the gen, their gen-
Fund eleven. We haven't broke out for budgeting purposes, but-
I think that was right. I'll look and see. Three sixty-five, I guess it's, that's what we moved into that fund, what it gone, it was moved that in, yeah.
So what will that leave us in the capital outlay?
Capital outlay is a line item, so you'd have to look at those, that's a report I just gave.
Oh, yeah, that, you know, those numbers really help me. Here's one that's got five thousand nine hundred dollars in it. You think that'd work?
What was the, what did we, five thou, five hundred what thousand? Did we just spend?
Four hundred.
It's a lot, I have to look for sure.
No budget for it, or we didn't build them well.
Oh, here's capital outlay. What's this one?
Forty-four, oh, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Four hundred and ninety-six thousand remaining, it looks like.
And you said three seventy-five, three sixty-five in the other one?
Yeah.
Five fifty-one, seven thirty, no.
Five hundred and, did this, so there would be about four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, a little more coming out of it too, so.
Hundred and, four hundred and six, hundred and sixteen approximately.
Did you say four fifty?
Uh, there's more than that, but-
We're just rounding it off five.
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen total?
I think that's- Yeah, it has all.
So we'll be taking approximately one fifty from four fifty. So what, so we'll have three hundred thousand left in the capital outlay after this large equipment purchase, which is dedicated to?
A lot of it gets, uh, used for equipment purchase and also picking up the slack on chip seal. 'Cause we usually never able to-
But we won't be spending that whole entire three hundred thousand on chips, I mean, chips, we already made our equipment purchase, so. Okay, so that's something we can talk about next time, maybe what we're gonna do with that three hundred thousand in the capital outlay for the rest of the year.
You got anything else?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, we sent John in please.
What did you say that was, Don?
You have a nineteen forty-four hundred.
Forty-four hundred and eleven.
And they track by ten minutes.
Yeah.
Good morning, how's it going?
Yes, hello.
Morning.
Hello.
So, you ready?
I'm ready.
Ready to roll? Any? We'd like to, uh, request an executive session to have a discussion about our, uh, finances of our corporation.
I gave you that sheet back, I'm sorry, Don. I just put it by your desk, or on your desk.
There's one there, but I don't know what you wanna do.
Thank you. We approved things, didn't we?
Yes. Yes, I would say going in number four, discuss the data relating to financial affairs of trade secrets, corporation partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorship. I would some move, how long do you think you're gonna need, John?
We have to have a second line there.
What's that?
It would be for financial disclosures from Lincoln Park Manor.
Yes.
I'd get to have that second justification on top of this.
How long? Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five?
Who do you want included?
Just, right here.
Just this one?
Yeah.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
I'll have a second.
Any further discussion?
I, I might suggest that if there is anyone else here that wants to participate in any conversation about this topic, that we take public comment first, because if we're going to be going into executive session for forty-five minutes, it might be appropriate to allow any public comment discussion to happen prior to that. Not only for our personal knowledge, for when we are in discussion, but also just as a time convenience for anyone who may have shown up just to address the topic or has any questions or anything like that.
We know what the topic is over the financial.
Well, I think there, there has been plenty of prior disclosure about, you know, requests and intense-
I have a problem taking the comments, someone has a comment. But I don't know, I can comment on something we haven't discussed, but-
Well, they're not gonna be privy to any of the information we're receiving now anyhow. I'm saying if anyone here has shown up to have any questions or comments about this issue- issue, then maybe they should be addressed now instead of forty-five minutes from now.
I don't see anyone. There's no further discussion, all of us prepared to go into executive session for forty-five minutes. Discuss the related financial affairs of private corporation. All of us prepare to sign.
I will.
And the people present is John and Mr....
And the board. Martin.
Okay. And, um, so I'm going to set my timer.
Yeah, yeah, you, you knock on the door or whatever.
Okay. After everybody leaves, I'll three quarters of a minute.
You do.
Make sure you time.
Thank you, sir.
Chief? Yes.
Howdy, howdy. Morning, how are you, sir? What do you know for the good of the call?
We'll ask you why he's on that, right?
Probably back in session. Did you have anything you needed just before Dawn?
Yes, but Norman was one of the...
Yeah, well, that's why I didn't know if you wanted to... Norman, you got, you wanted to get on the agenda, so...
I'd say the only thing that I have is that I need instruction on what we're doing for the services for the elderly check, where we will draw it as is and then you guys can discuss it next Thursday.
Say that again?
The remaining distribution for the services.
You're about to distribute the second half of the mill levy?
I would say it doesn't, doesn't go out at this time, being alone personally.
Can you hold it in the general fund?
Um, I would need a motion for you guys to...
I move to hold the second distribution, the mill levy for services for the elderly in the general fund until further discussion and decision by the board.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of the persons that are...
Aye.
Okay, Norman?
I'd like to address the web fund, economic benefit fund.
Okay.
This has been in place for ten years.
Yes.
How much benefit have we seen in this county?
Oh, I don't have those numbers.
We don't have any factories that are employing anybody. We don't have any established businesses that have expanded and hiring anybody. So after ten years, I don't think we've seen the benefits from what we should be seeing. We need to dissolve this fund and put it into the general fund. If you would dissolve this fund, we would stop a lot of this controversy because there are other individuals that are wanting to use this money for their private use. That's not what it's for. That money was intentionally, intentionally red, uh, slated for tax relief. So I think somebody hijacked that fund.
I don't think there was anything there in the wording of that that said it's for tax relief.
Well...
I think, you know, we've discussed multiple times that the idea was to have five million dollars sitting there, from that point on, it would be used for other things.
Well, that was somebody's personal...
And I can tell you, Norman, that when they refinanced the bonds on the hospital, we had gone up two points in our bond rating and I think it was, they estimated we saved eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars in interest on the bonds at the hospital because that money was sitting there. So there's, there is benefit to it.
Not economically wise, it hasn't.
Well, I don't know, but...
The words are economic benefit.
I would say saving eight hundred and some thousand dollars is somewhat of an economic benefit.
You're saying the, the interest rate on the bonds was lowered because we had an asset or bank?
Yes, because our bond rating went two points. Because that money was sitting there.
We still got too much controversy over this fund. Everybody wants it. And it's supposed to be for tax relief.
Okay.
Regardless of what you do, there's going to be controversy. Some people are going to like it, some people aren't.
Eliminate it.
I've been told that, I would like to address the nursing home, if you don't want to leave yet, Mr. Gableman. I would like to address the nursing home, if you don't want to leave yet.
That's what I was waiting to see if you're going to.
I would like to. But just to speak to this topic, I was told that at several public meetings, even before the wind towers were established, that they talked about, okay, we had two options and one was have a savings account, for lack of a better term, which is this web fund, or directly feed it into the general fund like Ellsworth County does. Um, but I was told that some of the people's takeaway from the public meetings is that we were going to subsidize our deficiency in infrastructure, the roads and some of that bridge issue that we're dealing with, not being able to keep up with, you know? So is that, where am I getting that from? Because some people think that that's what the public discussion...
And I think that at that time, when we discussed the fact that we were going to bank five million dollars of it and then the rest could be used for other things. And they also set up the other fund where the interest goes to benefit the nonprofits and the cities, you know?
That's caused another controversy. How do you pick who gets the interest money?
With a board set up to people apply.
Exactly. The board picks it. How many's on that board? Three?
Five.
Five? They can pick who they choose, don't they?
Well, having been on the board, I can tell you that most of the time that the paperwork's in order and stuff, they, they get approved.
But who do you pick to receive this money? I like him, or I know him.
People apply.
I know they apply, Don, but still, the perception is there that something is wrong.
Well, and I've had people comment, why are we giving money to tax-funded organizations? Why is that money going back in, you know, um, I can't think of a good example right now, but we've had plenty of tax-funded organizations apply and they receive, it's like a second tax subsidy, you know? It's not just for nonprofit use where it's a private fund, where they do their fundraisers and they want something additionally. A lot of times, it's already an entity surviving off of tax money that then gets a subs, an additional subsidy.
I think that's just the nature of the 501(c)(3), for one thing. Still, the Singer Center just got eight hundred dollars to buy a lifter. They get tax dollars on top of that, so...
Well, they haven't, they haven't this year. They haven't in a year, but...
That's true, that, that was their choice for the most part. They didn't want to submit the paperwork.
That's wrong.
They didn't want to submit the paperwork.
You're going down the wrong road, Terry. Not true.
Yeah, that's true. In fact, you even said that you wouldn't accept any money from them, so...
That doesn't, they didn't say they didn't...
Regardless, back to what we were talking about.
Well, the reason we don't accept money from them is because they don't find us the money that we deserve, not because of we don't want to hand in paperwork. We've handed in so much paperwork, you wouldn't believe it. That's not the issue.
Back to what we were talking about, though, they're, they are tax-funded basically for the most part. But they applied for, there was another thing they applied for that was put on hold, I don't remember what it was, but, but they didn't fund it. So does that mean that Sylvan Singer Center, because they are partially supported by taxes, can no longer get web fund stuff?
No, I'm, I'm not saying, I, I'm just saying there are quite a few tax subsidized entities that apply for that money.
And most of them, most of them are 501(c)(3)'s of some kind. Or, you know, sometimes, some of it's gone to some of the cities, Beverly's got some, I think Sylvan's got some. I can't remember who all through the years has gotten money out of that, but...
This is another issue I'd like to address, and it was brought up here for meeting previously. On these box covers, you're removing the bridge rails. Or you're building new ones without bridge rail. I can show you one out in Valley Township, you built a brand new one, now it's a safety issue. But a mile north of where this one is, they took the bridge railing off to accommodate a farmer.
Well, it's, there are some railings that are part of the structure of the bridge and there are some that aren't.
That's on an FAS road and that should have never been removed because that has credible money.
I think the engineer just described a scenario this morning because he was asking me how deep that bridge is on Eightieth, I think, is the right route, I might be wrong. And he was saying they've had some discussion at the state level about an eight-foot drop or less, there can be removal of the railings. If I'm, if I'm interpreting what he said, um, but like that, for example, there are no railings on this one that's at least twelve, I'd say, maybe tw- ten to twelve feet, if not more, um...
But I think most of the ones that have been removed, they've been removed to benefit to where they can get implements across them or combines across them, is the reason that they've been removed.
You got a removable head of quick tax.
Well...
Is that the, is that the...
They also have discs that won't fit through sixteen foot and they have other equipment that won't fit through sixteen foot, too.
So this is going to become a political issue because it's being questioned now in Topeka, some of this equipment is so big.
Getting bigger.
Causing traffic hazards.
I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Alan, but, you know, we're gonna, are we gonna, Jim, you gotta start taking your discs down, taking it apart and moving it down the road, you know? Can't move it, can't move it complete anymore.
He meant Norman, it's okay.
I'll let you and Norman argue about that one. Did you have something you want to say, Jim?
Do you want to come up and talk?
Do.
I assume maybe you came because we had, we had Lincoln Park Manor on the agenda.
Yes.
And would you like to update us as to any discussions that are ongoing between your new, newly forming, you're not a nonprofit, right?
That's correct.
Yet, you're, but you're still, the board is still having meetings and...
Yes, we had a meeting last Monday and, uh, we were waiting on Mr. Grace to tell us what his financial situation is.
Have you received that information yet?
I have not. He, uh, sent me an email last week after our meeting, he was at the meeting, indicating that after he talked to you all, he would speak to me, that he hasn't.
Okay.
I have no meeting set up with him yet.
Well, and he didn't come, he didn't end up coming last week, which...
That's correct.
Okay, so he came this week. And we did have an executive session to talk about financials, um... I guess just to update you on a little bit of our discussion this morning, we had Steve Granzo and, and he explained, re-explained to me and explained for the viewers, why the hospital was unable to really financially support a long ter, long-term care and/or the nursing home itself. But he did say that we would have the ability to contract some services through them. And that may be a benefit to us if he was able to, if the hospital was able to provide some of those services at a lesser cost than what they're already being contracted for. Some examples were billing, infection control, dietitian services and human resources. They already have those in place there and I think he's suggesting that they might have the time and/or capacity to take on a little bit heavier workload for that additional contracted fee.
But it would have to be under contract. They can't just do it.
I think our concern at this point as a board, what we've reached as a consensus is how, how do we transition to a nonprofit operating the nursing home as opposed to continuing this lease that we have with a for prop, for-profit corporation? And in that transition, there are a few hangups. We talked about, um, the Medicaid, Medicare billing transition. You know, I don't know what your plans were for that. Do you have anything to give us as far as a lead on how you would or would not transfer licenses, the billing information, so that that continues to go undisru, um, undisrupted?
We, we have plans, but again, until you and Mr. Grace work out the financial problems between the two of you and his financial problems, there's nothing we can do. I can't, you know, I can talk to people, but I can't make promises, I can't execute contracts, I can't do anything until we have a dog in the fight. Right now, we don't have a dog in the fight.
So what it looks like, though, from the proposals that we've discussed in the past month, it really looks like one hundred percent of the upfront cash, let's call it, that you were requesting goes to pay off debts, accumulated accounts payable, et cetera, et cetera, from the, from the current owner. In that scenario, there's no working capital for a new oversight committee or board or, or operator. There's no working capital to make up that deficiency. They're losing money, we were, that was reported to us previously, about twenty-some thousand dollars in there. So we're concerned about that.
Again, we don't have any of John Grace's financial information, except that has, has been provided to you on the July of twenty seventeen and a March of twenty eighteen, uh, accounts payable. And we of the board have sat down and last Monday, we went through all of the monies, the financial status, as we see it, with the information we've been given to us. And we've done some work and we believe that by scrubbing the numbers and doing some stuff, we can, one, take care of the, keep the staff as it exists now, continue the good care and increase the care of the patients. To do that, we need a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the county that you're now spending on your maintenance. That's what you're spending here on maintenance.
We have a, we have one hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocated for, for this year.
It's probably including what should be the rent money and that.
That's, that's right. We would like to have a rent-free lease, we'd like to have a billing, but we'd take a rent-free lease or a long-term lease. We would completely redo the way that the billing is done. They may or may not use the Medicare/Medicaid billing because they have, the company that they're using now is very reliable and is used by a lot of other people. But as far as the payroll, all the other accounts other than Medicare/Medicaid, we have a completely different solution for that.
What would that be?
Well, I'm not really able to tell you the names of who we would like to do, but we have an accounting firm that's old and established and has done extremely good work for a lot of people in this community.
You would want to contract to an accounting firm to take care of your accounts payable and your accounts receivable?
That's great, and they don't bill on an annual basis, they deal, deal on billable hours, which is the way you ought to be doing that stuff.
And you're saying right now they're under contract for a yearly fee regardless of the income level?
Apparently, that's what it looks like. And they're way over what we project we need for that.
Well, these are the types of services we were just discussing with Mr. Granzo as far as the billing and, and being able to contract for that kind of thing. Have you, has your board had any discussion with him?
No, but we haven't discussed with anybody because we can't until somebody says, okay, we want you to provide us with a form, formal bid. But before we can give you a formal bid, Mr. Grace has to pony up the money that he owes. We can only take it if we buy it on an asset basis, we can't buy it on a share basis. We've got to have a zero balance to accounts payable before we can even consider doing
What are you considering an asset basis? What are, what are the assets?
If you buy shares, you buy the debt and everything else. We're not going to buy any debt.
Okay, so what are you considering their assets to be purchased?
Everything except what you own.
Do you know what that is, or...
Well, we have your inventory of the lease.
Do you have any idea what that number may be as far as a purchase for assets?
Uh, yeah, we do. But we got to get Mr. Grace out before we can do that.
I mean, but he would have to agree to the terms of the purchase, so he would have to agree on the amount, the dollar amount.
He's got to pay his bills before we will enter into any negotiation. We cannot negotiate whatever he owes, and I don't know how much he owes, but it's some number around six hundred thousand dollars probably, but I don't know that. And, you know, I can't, my board will not enter into a contract and try to make money when we already owe six hundred thousand dollars. We're talking, the board is a nonprofit, we're talking to break even, and that's our whole goal, is to break even, continue the existing care, retain the existing staff, and we believe we can do that. But you guys got to decide how he's going to grace with that, I see.
But your intention is to not make any changes, no administrative changes, anything like that? You're just looking at contracting different service providers for some of that?
All of them.
I mean, are you looking at soliciting for new, uh... I mean, are you looking at soliciting for new, um, companies with administrative license?
No, that's the license now, again, that's part of John Grace's. He has the license now, if he doesn't change that license over. If he withdraws and gives you a sixty-day notice or whatever, he's gone and doesn't give us the license. You're in serious trouble over there.
Have you done any searching as far as what it will take to get relicensed there?
Take about ninety days.
To get relicensed for the state to come out and issue a new license to a new company?
It costs money to do that.
Do you know what that costs?
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
Paid to the state, paid to K Dads?
No. If you need to get to the administrator's license. Requires four hundred and eighty hours at a community college, County County has a very nice one. It's a one-hour course on finance of the nursing home and thirteen credit hours. This is where the four hundred and eighty hours comes in. Under the tutelage of a nursing supervisor and administrator. And that will take, well, our law four hundred and eighty hours takes. Then you'll get a nursing, uh, administrator's license for a nursing home. You gotta have some, have some, uh.
I mean, are you planning on soliciting to potentially hire someone with an administrative license to come in and operate your newly purchased?
We don't know until he says you can have this license, this license may stay in place.
Well, John Grace doesn't have that license, remember?
The nursing home does.
Well, the current administrator of the nursing home has a personal license.
That's right.
So we're talking about two licenses, uh, the, the one is, belongs to the person who's the administrator. The other one belongs to the business?
Yep.
Who rents the facility.
Yep.
So you're saying it takes about ninety days to get that business relic- a new license potentially?
No, it depends on a lot of other things. But we can't start that procedure until we know what the situation is with Mr. Grace.
I know, I'm just asking for information sharing so that we have a good idea of how this procedure works no matter what. I mean, I think. We have talked earlier this morning about with a hospital, you know, if the county is going to, number one, stay involved and get, it looks like more involved. If, if this is all to transpire, we have to have a similar setup to the hospital. We can't just give money.
Get the county out of the business completely. That was our stated aim, is to remove John Grace from the business and remove the county from the business. That's why we formed Lincoln Manor Incorporated Board. And as far as we see, our mission, our goal is to, we'd like to have you give us your stuff over there. And if you don't, then we're going to execute a long-term lease. And you'll have no further management influence over that nursing home except over the building. And we think you really want to get rid of that building and let Lincoln Manor Incorporated take over the whole thing as a neat clean deal. If you don't like being in the vault and the administrative nursing home, you never have, it's always been a pain. We think this is your opportunity to get out of it, so if it's possible, you ought to get out of it. That was our stated goal when we formed this and that was what we were given as a direction to go into. Get the county out, get Mr. Grace out, have a nonprofit with board members from the local area. And we've done that, we're just waiting on you guys and Mr. Grace to decide what you're going to do.
So are you saying that you think if a nonprofit were to operate it as is? It would begin leveling out expenses because, because the for-profit company has its own additional expenses?
Lots of them. You take a fine-toothed comb and you go through that list you got.
So maybe we need to call for an audit if, if the county's going to be investing money?
Well, I don't think you can do that if you want.
Well, they don't have to participate, obviously.
It's a one-time one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar maintenance, uh, line of credit. And that's what you're spending now for maintenance and repair. In fact, you have a lot more than that this year and the next three years, you have that in your budget. We just want one, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar payment from the county.
Okay, wait, I'm writing this down because this is a little different than the last time we talked because?
It's still up there. We've just given up on the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever it is to get John Grace out of it.
That's what I'm saying, you're, you're saying that the new concept is your board still wants to take it over, but you want working capital. You're not asking for the rest of it, which was to effectively purchase the company that was in debt.
Pay off his debt.
And how far do you think that one hundred and seventy-five thousand is going to go at negative twenty-six thousand dollars a month?
Well, that negative twenty-six thousand dollars a month, you better own debt too.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I was kind of concerned about not having an audit to begin with.
Well, you had one back in July.
Did you read that or were you here when I read that?
That's the only, that's the only real figure that I have.
Did you read the disclosure on that audit though?
That's a standard disclosure.
It's not, it's not, I've checked into that.
In any case, those are the best numbers we have. And plus the March of twenty eighteen numbers. And we presume that the March twenty eighteen was a submission to the state or, uh, nursing home board, whatever it is, I don't have the exact title. And I presume those numbers are accurate and truthful, otherwise the state would be down. So that constitutes pretty close to real numbers, I think. And that's what we have used as the basis of our financial planning. And we believe that you can make a little money, maybe forty thousand a year. And it's now structured without doing a whole lot more by eliminating a lot of stuff that we think are duplication and unnecessary. We would see no change to the care, no change to the staff. We just want to change for the administration stuff and the financial stuff that's going on. I provided those numbers to Mr. Grace last Monday, by the way, he had those in his hand.
So what would, what are you proposing would be the incentive for him to relinquish? Ownership and operation of that facility as is, without, without you making the same offer to buy out his debt?
Somebody's got to pay his debt. And my board has no money. And so it's between the county commissioner and John Grace, he's going to bring all his debt up to zero. And until that's done, we're wasting our time talking about taking it over.
Well, I have a question because some people are under the impression that you're considering, the board is considering. Keeping John Grace and Kristen Robinson on as administrators. And we don't really understand why, when they've run it six hundred thousand dollars in a whole one year. Why we would want to choose them as administrators going forward. It seems like the license issue could be overcome, um, with a different administrator or a different management. We just wonder where your board stands on that question.
Our guidance from the start has been to relieve John Grace of any responsibility and influence in Lincoln Park Manor. Get the county out of the business of Lincoln Park Manor. Take it over with a board composed of, uh, local board members and have a five oh one C three. And that's, we're meeting that. We believe that the current staffing, Kristen Robinson and all the other folks over there are an asset. Kristen's been there for thirteen some years. And if you look at the changes in the nursing home since she's had that in her thirteen and a half years, it has improved virtually every year.
Financially.
Financially, it hasn't been her problem, I mean, it hasn't been her problem. Care is where she's good at. We believe that by providing the financial part of them, we can take care of that.
Wasn't that what was supposed to happen with this last ownership change? I mean, it was the same exact scenario as what you're explaining now, last year.
Yep.
And it didn't?
But nothing changed, so I'm just wondering what's the, I mean.
How is this different?
You're kind of leaving us to assume that it's all, um, the new owners' mismanagement of expenses. But we saw the same thing with the prior owner who still works there. I mean, we're kind of layering up these previous owners who have had something to benefit from the transition every time. Regardless of relinquishing ownership, the person that was there still maintained a job. Um, and I don't know what's supposed to happen with the new owner. I, I was told by you actually that he was going to be contracted to continue to provide services for at least an amount of time. That's different now?
There's a transition, there's either ninety-day or one hundred and eighty-day transition period. And that will require a contract, but that's a transition just to change over all the financial stuff, the license, everything else. You can't just wake up one morning and, and he goes away and you pick up the ball and try to build people, do this, do that, clean it. There's going to be a transition period. But he is not, after that transition period, is not going to be involved with our boards.
But wasn't part of the reason John Grace came in was because of financial difficulties from when Kristen Robinson was running the nursing home?
I wouldn't involve an agent, I'd talk to the board.
Yes, yes, that's true.
So there were already financial issues before he ever got on a board? And that's why I think why a lot of people are concerned with the idea of no management change and no administration change.
Yeah, would it be your intention to?
We envision a structure that has an administrator, a chief care officer and a chief financial officer. And those three people report to the board.
But if you're only going to make an additional forty thousand, how are you going to pay two more positions that are both, I mean, more than?
We're not paying those positions.
That's going to be volunteer position?
Not, not entirely. The chief care officer would be the person in charge of taking care of the patients and all the patients' needs. And that would be Kristen, she's good at that. If you look at all she's done in her care business, take away the financial, she has a superb record in that person. So what we need is a chief financial officer. And that would be a person or a company that we would contract with to do the bill, billing, a separate company to do Medicare Medicaid. So yes, there would be an additional expense, but that additional expense would certainly be offset by the savings that that person would bring to us.
Care, chief care officer, financial officer and?
The administrator.
The administrator.
And under that, you'd have a chief care officer and a chief financial officer. We see the administrative chief care officer being the same person, Kristen. And we see the chief financial officer being the person we're going to use to run our money business. Those people, all three of them, report to the board at least monthly and more often if we need it. The board meets two times a month.
Two people, three positions, is what he's saying. Oh, you said, you said one person is going to fill two of the three.
That's right.
You're making a pyramid here and you're one person. So does that come, yeah, that comes with a additional responsibility, comes with an incentive?
Of course it is, but not to the board because we're nonprofit.
No, we understand that, I think.
And the chief financial officer would be paid on the billable hours rather than his salary. You work, you get money, you don't work, you don't get money.
It sounds to me like you're setting up a reward system for the same issues that weren't being productive, but that's, I mean, that's. By creating new positions and?
We're not creating new positions, we're calling a chief financial officer something that now has four different companies contracted to do. If you look on your report, you'll see one of those companies gets eighty-eight thousand dollars a year for doing whatever.
The billing?
That's right. That can be done for probably close to twenty.
The company that's doing the billing now for Lincoln Park Manor, is that a company separately owned by John Grace?
I don't know, I have not looked at those boards because it doesn't make any difference and we're not going to use them.
Just wondered, we had a question, I think.
Did, did Kristen run this in twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Well, well, I looked up on the computer, of course, I know the computer's not always right, but, uh, state level, they failed in the nursing staff because they didn't have enough nurses on. Enough, uh, help. So you're saying that she does a good job on the nursing stuff, is that part of that?
I don't know that I ever heard it, they failed on inspection because they didn't have enough nursing staff.
If you look on the computer, it's on there.
I wouldn't look on the computer, I'd like to see a written documentation from a state office.
They have the state, you can go to the state website, they have the state reports.
I'm not aware of that.
To me, in, the, the, the concerns that have been brought to me with the whole scenario is that, um. We are potentially subsidizing, funding, fronting, investing money, county money. Into a situation where, um, from that point on, we really don't have any oversight. So if we're going to maintain oversight, there needs to be county involvement long-term. If we're not going to maintain oversight, we're not really soliciting for professionals. We're just kind of knocking on doors of neighbors. And in that scenario, we're not seeking out people who are in this business. And, you know, the last time this transitioned, John Grace claimed to be a professional. And if he wasn't able to make it work, uh, this, there's kind of like an unstable sense of how that's ever going to, to happen. And in fact, you know, I'll just use Grant County as an example, because I've talked about it recently. But they, in a small county, actually larger than ours, they have a population of, I think, about eight thousand. They were subsidizing their nursing home to the tune of a million dollars a year. And so what they finally did was they consolidated the business and the building into one sale. And they solicited for buyers and they sold it totally so that they would stop subsidizing it. I don't think this board has a consensus on doing that in particular, I'm just bringing it up as an example.
But I think this board needs to decide, are we going to maintain control of the nursing home or are we going to get out of the business? That's the decision you have to make. And once you make that decision, then the rest of this can kind of go forward. I'm going to quandary because I don't know which way you guys are going to go. If you're going to keep strings on the nursing home, then you probably ought to set up a nursing home department underneath the county and run the damn thing.
I think that. The, uh, the concern is that it's going to be sold to a real estate investment firm like the one at Wilson and all the others were, and they're going to run it for a year. And shut it down.
That's right, and that's what we're trying to avoid with our nonprofit board. We think we can take it over and make it work. Now, my board has got some pretty serious members on it, it's not a pickup group.
But I think he's saying there's still a concern that your board could end up selling out at some point. Not about what you do with the money, I mean, it's a nonprofit, you have to dissolve, but just that, that, that risk still exists, I guess. It's my understanding that other counties that maintain ownership of their facility, they do rent to a nonprofit who then contracts to an operator. An actual operator who does all of the facilitation, not. Like you're, you're kind of suggesting that you have all these individual people that are going to fill all these roles, but it's not really a business. You're kind of a group that's going to partition out these responsibilities. Um, it's my understanding that the other counties, they rent to the nonprofit, the nonprofit then employs an actual operating company. That's how, that's what I've been exposed to. Who's your operating company then?
We don't have a company, we have an individual.
That's what I'm saying.
If you feel better with a company, that way you can increase your expenses, you can spread the, the joy out to everybody, you won't get anybody in charge.
Well, I think.
We're not going to solve this today, Grace. There are some negotiations on both parts with Mr. Grace, definitely us and you guys, I think we're still in the go- negotiation area and I don't think that.
Well, that's, you know, you can't.
Well, and I think if we're going to continue to own the building, I would like to see a public referendum to find out, you know, are we going to continue to subsidize this? Because there's nothing to stop your board from coming back here next year and saying, we haven't made our bills, we need a subsidy of another two hundred and fifty thousand. And the year after that, and the year after that. So if we're going to continue to subsidize, I think that needs to be a decision of the taxpayers. If this board individually makes that decision, it's on the board. I mean, I guess we don't have to be re-elected or, or, you know, or we can be praised for it. But I would like to see the public have a say on continuation of the subsidy.
That's, uh, how long are you going to allow Mr. Grace to operate the way he is now?
We have given him his notification that he is in violation of the rent payments.
That, how long are you going to let him operate the way he is now?
He only, he only has a certain amount of time to rectify that financial default to the county. And then we have the ability to withdraw. And then we have the ability to withdraw from the lease, if and when that happens.
But now, but you want to put an election in. And that election cannot take place for a good, good period of time, way past his deadline. If you're refereeing, you want to have a referendum.
I would love to see that.
You've got to set up the election on that stuff. That's going to occur way after his deadline. You need to wonder what's going to happen to the nursing home. There's a lot of uncertainty.
Well, my suggestion is I think the, the county commission needs to be in contact with the state. I think we need to contact the state, get a per, a point of contact, an individual person who deals with this on a regular basis.
Again, you're talking time. I don't know how much time you have.
Well, that's not a question that any of us can answer. That's only someone from K-DAG's responsibility to convey to us what our limitations are, what our options are, what they will do for us. You know, do we have this lull in management? Is there something, is there something, you know, you use agency nurses to come in. Are there agency nursing, nursing home operators? I'm sure there probably are.
But still, you need to find out how much time you have because at some point in time, Mr. Grace can say, I'm done.
I understand that.
And if he says, I'm done, you're losing your nursing home.
Well...
There's no immediate fix. If you come in, tie him saying, I'm done, and pick up the reins of that nursing home the next day.
That's why we need to be in contact with the state. We don't know that. We don't know if they provide relief, you know, some sort of temporary relief so that, we're not the only ones who've ever experienced this. And for us to think that we have to internally interpret the, the future process, that, that's a mistake. I think that we just really need to have a point of contact, find out who the professional is at the state level that can guide us. We have no guidance right now.
But I think you need to work with John Grace and get his problem solved.
I don't think it's our responsibility to pay anything for him. That's my personal view.
Then you need to tell him that and say, you've got to pay your bills.
Those are his bills, no matter where he goes. If he leaves the state, they're still his bills.
And if the state comes in and, as you wish, to take it over, they're still going to be his bills. They didn't pick it up either, are they?
Correct. And they don't ever become our responsibility at, at any point. Never do they become our responsibility.
But how are you going to resolve that issue? Somebody's going to have to pay those bills.
He has to pay them.
But if he can't pay them or doesn't pay them or declares bankruptcy, then what happens?
If I don't pay my electric bill, does it become your bill?
I understand that, but we're talking about the nursing home. And I envision that the nursing home is going to close pretty damn quick unless you get something resolved with John Grace.
This always seems to be the final topic when we have this discussion. It's that the nursing home is going to close. And we haven't even began, we haven't even begun to explore the options. We've never solicited for operators. We've never solicited for purchasers. You know, we're, we're sitting around saying, saying to one another that it's going to close if we don't internally take care of this problem. We don't have the capacity internally to take care of this problem. We need to reach out beyond our borders and find out what can be done, not just to one person. If I had known that when John Grace came to this community, that everyone would jump up and, and just be so ecstatic about the first opportunity for someone with an idea, I would have set up six people to come at the same time and give six different proposals. I had no idea that this area would be so eager to have one person's new idea and jump on it, whether it made financial sense or not. I had no, I had no idea. If I knew that, I would have simultaneously brought things to the table to give a choice. Now we're in the position where we don't find ourselves having choices because we jumped on the first opportunity, whether it made sense or not. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board and find out what our choices are.
I think we need to be reassuring the people in the nursing home because if they get restless and they look at all the disagreement and uncertainty going on, they're going to take their mother or father and start looking for another nursing home. And if you resolve this thirty days after they move to Presbyterian Manor somewhere, they're not going to come back.
Well, that's been going on for two years. That's not just in the, the recent transaction.
It could be an open door here pretty soon because the uncertainty is running rampant over there. I have a message from a lady over there that I've shared with John and Kristin. And, uh, they seem to be uncertain about their future, and that's not good.
I think that's been for two years. That's been the, the feeling there. I mean...
Well, then we ought to be reassuring them. But we're going to solve the problem and not continue to say, we don't know what we're going to do. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. We're going to do this. We're going to do something else. Because that does not solve your reassurance at the nursing home. And those people are going to start moving out. I would if I had my parents over there, and I've had six in my family go through there. And I am really concerned that the uncertainty and not knowing what's going on is going to drive them out.
Well, there's been uncertainty in the propositions that have been offered to this table, you know, so...
But we ought to be able to tell them that we have the capability and we are going to solve it.
Well, we are going to solve it, but I think we need to reach beyond our own capabilities.
I don't think they feel that. Anyway, I'm just arguing. I'm not...
No, I understand what you're saying. I...
My board is set up to try to solve the problem, and we are ready and able to do that as best we can. But we can't do anything until somebody pays the bills over there.
But you don't have any investment capital to bring to the table. You're requesting all of your 100% of your funding from the county? Okay.
No, we're, all we want is 175,000.
Okay. I wrote that down. You changed it from four, 475,000.
We have given up on paying John Grace the bills.
Okay. I, I move for Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to contact K-DAGs and seek information on the options for a nursing home.
Okay. You want to contact K-DAGs and have someone come in here to talk to us about it?
Correct. Correct.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Not all those inverers there. Hi.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing before we dismiss. We'll not keep you long. I just want to make an announcement. I serve on the juvenile detention board of North Central Kansas in Junction City, which Lincoln County has been a member since it was formed. Due to the change in law a year ago on, uh, putting juvenile detention, or juveniles in detention centers, uh, we found our facility had some extra beds. And so we are moving to create a secure care center. It'll be serving males 12 to 17 who have chronic runaway behaviors and have been adjudicated by the courts as child in need of care. This 24-hour, highly structured and safe environment allows male youth to address behaviors in a safe, organized setting. Our objective is to return the youth safely to their families and communities by decreasing the likelihood of future runaway episodes through skill-building and improvements in decision-making. Uh, the children, the child can only be placed in this facility by the judge. It is a sixty-day, uh, sixty days. They can renew those sixty days up to three times so they could spend at least 180 days. This, uh, center will be in one side of the juvenile detention center and the other side will be continued to run as a juvenile detention center. Uh, we have, I think, twenty, 28 or 32 beds. There will be 20 of them for juvenile detention. And I think there will be enough room for maybe 12 youth, uh, to be in the secure care center. As a member of, of that organization, Lincoln County will have priority, uh, to be placed in there if there are surrounding counties that are not members. Uh, we have been writing a census, uh, we're writing a census in the twenties, two years ago. Our census now are dropped to about 15 because of the change in the law. And, uh, so we felt that we had this extra space. Uh, this will totally be, right now, it looks like the state will pick up all the costs for keeping these children or these males in the secure care center. I guess I would point out that Lincoln County is guarantee, is, pays a month, a yearly fee. And that gives guarantees, it's, I don't know, two or three days. Oftentimes, we don't use those days. The cost is running about $175 a day for youth down there. Uh, the state, if they're under state order, the court, they pay $120. And it's been that way since I've been on the board for the last 10 years, 12 years. Just wanted to make that announcement. We are hoped to be up running by August 1st. I will have some flyers, I think, within, maybe next month when I meet, they will give flyers to me that I can put out in the county. I have one here, but there needs to be some changes made on it.
Where's that facility now?
It's in Junction City. It's, if you're familiar with Junction City, Junction City has a courthouse and it has law enforcement, city police. And we have a little corner on a block down there, uh, that has this facility in. Yes.
I'll just briefly do the correspondence that we received today. Um, I'm writing to inquire as to your response to my letter presented to you date April 23rd, 2018 in regards to requests made to provide street signs at the corner of 181 Highway and Union and 80th and Vine, as well as requests to repair bridges that are located on 80th just north of Ash Grove and Double Arch Bridge located on Union just to the east of Ash Grove. As of this date, no signs have been placed or repairs made. There's a description of the business, Barnyard Lead Warriors, and the, the need for those. I'm just going to jump down here. Um, I'm requesting a written and detailed plan along with a timeline that explains when the signs will be placed and what plans have been developed for the two bridges. I would like for this plan to be sent to the address listing and the heading, um, within 10 days of this being presented to the commission. Sincerely, Mary Powell. And it's to the commission.
We just got a sign each, I think they're going to do 14 and they're going to do 181 and...
I think 181 and 14. They're already working on 14. But I think, we talked about doing 181 next. And I said, I think Union as a, what do we call that, collector route should also be prioritized on the list.
Union's got some signs. So does 181. We just have one at 181 and Union. And that's where, I mean, street construction couldn't even find us out there.
Well, and as far as the bridges, I was just talking about those today. They have no intentions to do anything with 80th because they're saying that in order to let equipment pass, uh, the, the proposition to me was, well, do you want to block it off? That's what I was told.
The banister's only a rock. If something's not there, it's like a bumper. If something's not there, a car's going to slide off that bridge.
I made that...
I went sideways on the one there.
I made that, um...
But the sad was that the, the bridge is only 16 foot wide with the banisters and their equipment can't fit between the banisters. That's why they had it built up like that.
That's why they left it off. And they left off the ones that are falling into the...
The ones that were knocked off, not falling off.
Sorry.
They were knocked off.
That, and then I made a suggestion to get a bid on hopefully several stone bridges to see if we can address that in that area. I specifically actually even talked about this one because I've looked at that several times myself with other people. I know you brought it up too.
Those are historical bridges too, and we need to protect them.
So we'll see, we'll see what the highway department comes up with.
It'll turn until May 31st, I guess, is what we're going.